Good afternoon, everyone. Every public body shall give notice of the date, time, and location of its meetings, other than special emergency or continuing meetings at least three working days in advance by posting such notice on its official public government website, if any, placing such notice in a prominent public location at which notices are regularly posted, and placing such notice at the office of the clerk of the public body, or in the case of the public body that has no clerk, the office of the chief administrator. Reasonable notice under the circumstances of a special emergency or continuing meeting shall be given contemporaneously with the notice provided to the members of the public body conducting the meeting. Mrs. Tanner, has today's school board meeting been properly certified?
Yes, Madam Chair, on June 27, 2019, notice was provided fulfilling all criteria via VA Code, Chapter 37.
Thank you, Ms. Tanner. I duly call this meeting to order. Ms. Tanner, please proceed with the roll call. Item 1.03.
Passine.
Here.
Camson.
Here.
Clanton.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Gabriel.
Here. Thank you. We will now proceed with our workshop. Between 4:00 and 5:00, we will be discussing items consisting of the budget. Item 2.01 is a school board budget discussion on priorities. We have had some healthy discussions regarding our budget priorities so that we can give direction to Dr. Birdsong and team on direction for the budget as they continue to iron out all of the details. So where we last left our discussion was that Mr. Clanton and Ms. Smith volunteered to work together on assembling the various emails and board member requests, and so I would like to turn the discussion over now to both of them in order to lead us in a 30-minute discussion of our budget priorities. Thanks to the both of you for volunteering.
Can you bring up the original, Vanessa's submission? So this is the original submission from everyone, and as you can see, it was very extensive. So we moved from there and consolidated. There are some consolidations. I've received feedback from board members that are a little off, but we can fix that here. So we'll go to the consolidated one where we combine like submissions to try to narrow this down further. So in consolidating them, we assign them to our goals and then attach the priorities to them as much as we possibly could. What we're, the point we're at now is to choose our priorities. The recommendation I have for that is to try and select at least one from every goal, preferably one from Goal 3, two from Goal 2, and three or four from Goal 1. And we could narrow it down more if you guys want to as a board. But Tanya, I know you had a concern about one wellness that was consolidated incorrectly.
Yes, because the well, I think it was the Wellness Champions and the school health and wellness coordinator are two separate resources. And I think if I reviewed that, the correct version of that, I think it was separated. I mean, well, it's, it's, there's a slash there now, so it's, yeah.
Okay, on the Goal 2?
Yeah.
Goal 2, what letter?
Okay.
Yeah. So, so it's, I think it's, I think.
Is that okay?
I think it's fine.
Okay.
So let's start with, if that's okay with the majority, let's start with Goal 3. Which one would we like to select from this group since it's the smallest? Start with the smallest.
Can I ask something real quick first? How did we arrive at the priority of how many would be from each one because we have a lot of instruction ones?
And that's why you have more coming out of instruction?
Will we then, once we choose those, will we then be able to look and say, well, maybe this one is not as important as another one we might want to add into an academic part or something?
We can decide, but I'm recommending that we at least try to cover each of our goals, something from, so that's why you only have one coming out of Goal 3, because it was the least of our submissions when you look at them in total. Or we can leave it out altogether.
No, I know, it's just a question. I was just wondering how we came to those numbers. Thank you.
Percentage, percentage of the total.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
A question also. So at the last meeting, we had discussed trying to, I think we discussed trying to make whatever we come out of this effort high level and not too prescriptive. Is that still the goal?
Yes.
Okay. So when we look at items that are on the chart that are, that one may find prescriptive, what is it that you want to hear from us?
We can condense it or express it in a more high-level term, terminology.
So now it's kind of like a keep-scratch exercise and then we come back and restructure it?
Because I didn't change too much of the wording that anyone put in there so that we could still be able to identify what we originally submitted.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. So under Goal 3, since we're on that topic, as far as budgetary priority, I would like to understand what is meant by impact of 2,000-plus school-aged children. I mean, currently, right now, within the budget, we have, we have resources allocated, and I know that Dr. Birdsong participates in the meetings with regards to St. Paul's Quadrant. So I just need to understand what, what is the, the meaning behind the financial priority for that impact?
So I wrote that initially, and again, this has gone through several different formatting processes. So initially, I really was just trying to bring attention to the administration and to the board, the fact that the initiatives that are happening in the St. Paul's Quadrant may have significant impact on our students, depend upon their schedule and timing and things that may be happening there. So one of the things that we learned from the Broad Creek Hope Six that we're still working through is we talk a lot as a board about the impact of moves on students and trauma and things of that type. So it was not my intent here, and any of my recommendations, as you see in the email, to be prescriptive to the extent that I could avoid it. I really was trying to say to the board and to the administration, I think it's something that we need to be aware of, and to the extent that Dr. Birdsong and the team are involved in conversations, if there are things that we need to prepare for, whether it's counselors, whether it's looking at enrollment, because if children start moving and get shifted, where are they going to get shifted? So it's a lot of impact, and the entire St. Paul's area zone identified these school-aged children. And I just wanted to bring attention to the board that potentially we could be talking about one out of eight, one out of every 10, one out of every 12 school-aged children in the city of Norfolk can be impacted by this development. I think that's something we need to be on top of.
I don't disagree with that.
A little add-on to that, then. That's really important, and I'm aware of that also, but my question is, how do you put that in a budget? Do you like to say, well, we're going to take this pocket of money and put it here under St. Paul's?
No. So again, I'm not trying to put it in the budget. I'm trying to bring awareness.
Attention, okay.
I think that.
It's just for us to be aware of.
I think it should be a priority for the administration to review as the administration prepares a budget for us to consider, if there's significant impact. They may come back and find that there is none. I just wanted to make sure it didn't get lost as an item.
Thanks for that clarification.
So then, so then what I would recommend for strength in family community engagement, I would support budgetary allocation alignment for Item B, communication and PR support, because we know that collectively messaging is critical to getting information out, whether that be, you know, good news, alerts, anything from that. And we do have a consulting firm that is reviewing communications right now, and so I would say that as far as community engagement goes, that I would like to prioritize this item if we are to choose an item, and you can even put it under the broader umbrella, strengthening communication and engagement with all stakeholders.
Okay. And I'm interested in C. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, I agree with you on that one. But I just have a comment about C and any, anything in particular like this. As we, I just, my concern is that if we start putting people in place like right, where we are right now, searching for a new superintendent, and we start saying, okay, we're going to have family and community engagement specialists in our elementary schools, and then someone comes in, say, in the next six months, and they might have a different way of organizing that. I'm just, I think that we need to keep that in mind. Not saying it's a bad idea, but there might be a better option that's down the road.
I'm sorry, Ms. Passine, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, since you're piggybacking.
The Title I schools, which almost all of our elementary schools, I think we have three that aren't Title I, always had, they used to be called parent liaison. Now, the principal decides, but most of the schools already have it. This is not a new position. It's a position, I'm not sure if it's in the three non-Title I schools. I don't think so. Yeah, because it would be.
That would be operating funds.
Right, right. So, but that's just, so I'm not sure, is it, do they all have one now? I guess.
I don't think, and Mrs. Malinette could speak to this, I don't think that they all opted to utilize their budgets to support that position.
Well, the budgets have been, because those budgets have been cut so much, they usually can only get one full-time position, and they usually use it for a instructional, instructional support person. So we're losing these, they're extremely helpful.
Okay.
That would be my priority for this particular one.
Just to reiterate, I think, a comment made earlier about, you know, some of, some of these are specific and prescriptive, but a lot are also general in the sense of they're seeking data to inform our decision-making process in, in this budget process. And so, you know, like, for instance, Mr. Clanton just pointed out, you know, under, under Goal 1, you know, there's implementation of the wellness policy. I think ensuring that we are able, we have the resources to fully implement not just that policy, but any policy, I think, has to be examined, and we need to put the resources behind it to ensure that we're able to implement with fidelity. So that's one example that was given, but, you know, are there others, such as the equity policy, and making that really a core focus, and looking at that to ensure that we are equitably, equitably allocating resources across the district? What data do we have, what don't we have? And really, you know, kind of seeking to better understand that. A general overall question that I have is, you know, the input that you, Dr. Birdsong, are getting from your principals, your department heads, and how they're, you know, being on the front line, really having an understanding of what their own needs are, and how our more global view of, of what the needs may be, how they're aligned, and if they're aligned, if you're seeing a pattern from what you've heard and received so far, and, and what, you know, that's something I would like feedback on, that there may be things that we're not seeing or thinking about, or we may be way off with some of the things that, that we're suggesting here. So, you know, I'd like to hear more about that as well.
And so we have not convened yet. In accordance with our, our timeline, we will be convening in January, and so we'll have a better sense of what we believe our priorities to be.
Okay. And so similar to what Ms. Passine is saying, the way I see this and what this exercise that we're going through is, we're presenting to the administration what our priorities are, but it isn't concrete where we're saying that it has to be done. It's just something that we're saying we'd like you to take a look at, and we rely on their expertise to come back and say to us, just as Ms. Passine said, well, in the schoolhouse or throughout the district, we see the funds would be better utilized, although you submitted this as a priority. We see the funds being better utilized in these areas. Or if we were to go with this priority, here are some of the implications that are associated with it. So I don't see our priorities as hard and fast, that this has to be done and dollars have to be assigned to it.
Right. And that's, that's, that was, that was always the understanding with this discussion. As we mentioned before, we know that there will, there will be feedback that comes back from the administration to help guide us in our decision-making as it relates to data, as it relates to outcomes, as it relates to presentations that we receive. However, it is very important, as Dr. Birdsong has stated very early on, that she kind of get a, a general sense of what the desire of the board is collectively, so that way when they, when they are formulating the budget, if there is an area that we have a particular desire to see emphasized, that it's very clear, and that there is nothing towards the end of the budget process that we say, you know, comes up, comes up at the last minute. So again, going back to what the exercise is before us, we were at Goal 3. Is there, I mean, where are we going to try to?
With Goal 3, I am definitely interested in the impact of the St. Paul's Quadrant. As I ride through there, I'm beginning to see a lot of empty units, like several of them that are empty. So it begs the question, what's happening to the student population that formerly resided in those units? I don't know if the city can tell us how that transition is taking place, where people are moving to, but it's clear that the people are starting to move out of there. And it's going to impact those schools, our schools that are right there in that area.
I think we need a better understanding of what is covered under the Hope Six grant and other funds before we know what part, what role we should play. Because, right, because the way that I see it, and I'm, I'm trying to understand, and I think maybe we're on the same line of thought process, I know that they are meeting collectively with the school division, actually several entities are coming together, from what I understand, to make sure that if there is movement of the children, which I understand there is, I, I see it myself, that we are prepared both in staffing, resources, transportation, all of that. And I know that the communication is trying to be as best as it can, and maybe that's where Dr. Birdsong can, you know, share some topics, but, but absolutely, wherever the children go, whatever their needs are, should follow them. So if children are coming over with IEPs, for example, and they end up at a certain school, and if they need to have an extra special education specialist to follow them, then that's what needs to happen, but.
And with that said, when HUD came in, I believe it was in July, and the administration had to do a presentation for, for them, one of the concerns that they expressed was the ability of the school division to provide for the needs of the children as they are moving. And so I had to share with them that our administrators are accustomed to children moving every day. We're a transient, we have a transient population, and our principals are well-equipped to, to deal with those changes. And should the numbers be so significant that would require an additional staff member, then we certainly look at that and then make those adjustments.
May I just speak to that? So, you know, in the CNI grant, North Public Schools is the educational partner for the grant. You know, later on today, we'll be talking about like impact on enrollment at Boverti. So if you go back and look at the data from the impact on enrollment at Boverti, there was significant loss in enrollment because housing came down and housing still has yet to be completed in terms of build-back. So my thought was beyond just, I agree with Dr. Birdsong in terms of what our principals are equipped with, but from equity, from a focus perspective, it is very easy that, based upon where the housing plan may be, that J Cox, Chesterfield, some of the, Richard Bolan, Richard Bolan already probably has a disproportionate share, those schools get significantly impacted. And when you look at all the other data that we also have associated with those schools, I'm just simply trying to say, whatever it is, in this budget, to the extent that it is anticipated that certain schools or all schools are going to be significantly impacted, that that be something that be considered as we talk about the equitable distribution of resources in this budget. And that's, that's that.
I can. So I literally left a St. Paul's Quadrant meeting from 12:30 into 2:30. I'm actually sit on their economic mobility in my regular job. And so they actually have a plan that they are presenting that'll be done by the end of January, that will be presented to HUD in February. And they're moving everything in phases, so we're not going to get hit with a major thing at one time. They're phasing the mobility portion in. I do raise the question all the time about where we are, and I know that we have a representative at the table because it still begs the question, how is it going to impact our schools? And I, and I agree with Mr. Jordan in the respect, and others who've talked about that, but I'm still trying to, I mean, I see we have it as a priority. I think we have to look at it because it, I don't see it as a major, you know, decline in revenue for each one of those students. I don't see a lot of students because I know they're trying to keep them within the city. But I know that it's going to have an impact, like you said, if we have to move staff around for particular schools and so forth, and then also what the plan is for Todd Water, you know, Todd Water Gardens Elementary School and, and what it's going to do to Roughman. But I know that there is a plan that we'll be able to actually examine as a board come the end of January, February.
If I could just make one more comment on that. So just, just from my experience and having served on the Housing Authority Board, what often happens is if the Housing Authority or any other landlord, already the minute that the discussion started happening, that something was going to get torn down, people start moving on their own, even if they don't wait for all the resources.
Right.
The, the research tells us that there is always trauma associated with children and adults when they don't feel that they have stability.
Yes.
And so that's all I'm trying to raise, is that we know that there are hundreds of children that are already being impacted for a variety of other reasons, but now also are being impacted with the daily feeling of trying to figure out what's happening to their home. And so with that, I think that there are resources, it may be completely budget-neutral. Again, I'm just trying to raise it to the level of consideration.
That's what Urban Strategies is doing with their People First Plan. They're actually pulling together all of the entities that are already in our community to become that network, so that as individuals are transitioning, they actually have resources that can go to. So they're building that network, and that's their strategy.
And to be clear, I, I get your, okay, I understand what you're saying. I'm not saying that, oh, we don't, you know, even though the principals know what they're doing, and they're used to the children coming in, in and out, that there could be a need for additional resources, and we believe that we will need to do that.
Yeah, I know you know.
With social, emotional needs and all of that. So we haven't discounted that.
Oh, I know you know.
Okay.
But there's also the potential that with the move, it's a gradual move, and we're seeing an increase or a slight impact in schools, which is going to affect the resources that are allocated to those schools. As people decrease from the schools that they typically walk to, we may not see much in terms of transportation, but we'll definitely see resources, curriculum, and things of that nature being impacted as, as that shift takes place.
Agreed.
Right. Ms. Camson?
All right, moving on a little bit before we run out of time, back to the family and community engagement specialist that has traditionally been a Title I position, which I guess that's not, non-Title I schools, and which many of the schools had to give up because of the continued cuts. I really, I'd like to recommend that we table it and have a discussion about Title I, because as you know, I keep asking for the audit of Title I and Title II, which would include how much money is actually going into the schools and how much money is central, because there was a time that the central money for Title I went in to provide that position, and the little tiny budget that the principals are still getting, and we know a number of our S schools got cut after they had our annual plans this year. So, you know, that would be a recommendation, is that we kind of move that to when we have a discussion of Title I after the audit, maybe, and make sure that maybe that's a central thing that's decided so all the schools have it, because high-poverty children, this having a, this family engagement specialist makes a huge difference of the support they can give to our families.
So I would like to then offer that as we look at this strategy, as we look at this goal, and we look at what is underneath of it, can we then say, since we already know that the administration has personnel items, programs in place for the students within the St. Paul's Quadrant, can we combine it to say, communication and PR support with specific emphasis to make sure that we are doing, going in extra effort to, to stay in touch and communicate with the families of the St. Paul's Quadrant, so that way we are identifying issues or hearing concerns that they might have with regard to trauma, resources, and items like that? Is that, is that okay?
I'm.
Just trying to get us to.
Yeah, I don't know what the, what the PR audit is and when it's supposed to come back.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I don't have any objection to being prepared for that, but if we are going to talk about the St. Paul's piece, I just, if you just kind of leave it, I think if there's a agreement on the board, if it's something that we like for them to consider, then that would be fine. I don't think it's just a communication issue. I think it's.
I'm just trying to look at what we have here so we can, okay. So would the two of you be able to combine that, that, those two right there with what I had just mentioned, and we can agree that that will be the priority for Goal 3?
So can you explain the communication PR support a little more?
Well, actually, I think it was Ms. Passine that put it out there under that goal.
I put it out there because, you know, like Mr. Jordan just said, I agree. I don't know, you know, I don't know what the scope of the audit is currently, but I assume that not just for this audit, but tied to my earlier comment, is that we've had, you know, Council of Great City Schools do reviews of different departments, and they've provided great recommendations. You know, we, we can't keep doing these studies with recommendations and then not fund the recommendations. And so we have experts that have done deep dives into these areas that we are not, they may, some of them are reflected here, some are not. And so by putting, you know, whether it's the communication PR audit, whether it's a special education gifted audit, I think that we have to say to the administration that we have been with you, we have directed you to do this, and now we support the division in putting the money behind it so that we can execute the recommendations. And so my, my intent behind that was, was simply to say that an audit is, is obviously being done.
Yeah.
If I, that's true, right?
It's in process.
And that whatever, in process, and whatever those recommendations are, if there are resources that are needed as a result of it, then I support, and we find that that, that that is a high priority, then I support putting resources behind it. So that's simply, you know, on a general scale, what, what I meant by that.
So.
Can I add another thing? I, I don't know. I guess I'm struggling with trying to really pick at this chart at this point, because there are some that are specific, you know, whether it's a reading specialist, math specialist, and some very general comments like supporting an audit or supporting the recommendations. And so I, and I think some of it all kind of ties together. I mean, if our data shows that we need a tremendous amount of literacy support, for instance, I, I would hope that the administration, and I expect the administration to come back and say, these are, these are how we're going to get to improve student outcomes in this area. And so I think if we're generally saying, we recognize this as an area, this is what, you know, this is what we need, then, then I think we, at this point in the conversation, that that's what we do at this point, rather than trying to say, you know, I want to, Item L in there, and you know what I mean? It's, it's, I think, I think we're not there yet, and maybe that's me, or maybe I'm not understanding the process, but I don't feel like we're there yet to say, let's pick five of that, three of that, because there's, there's, so many of them go together, you know?
So let me just, let me just say here also that when, when an audit is done, whether that be by the request of the board or through the administration, I am assuming that once the report comes back, that the administration would come to us and put forth recommendations, whether that be, you know, positions. whether that be, you know, positions, realignment of staff, allocation of resources. And so again, when we have our work sessions and we, we, we kind of tailor the conversation, tell us policy recommendations, tell us budget implications, tell us that. I am assuming that if there's an audit that is done, that they're going to bring that information to us. And I know that in our last budget cycle, we did do some reallocation of funds that was suggested from the Council of Great City School with a transportation person. So I know that those things are being done, but I think we've got to come together. We've had, this is our third discussion on this topic. We've, we've got to be able to give direction to Dr. Birdsong in some way, shape, or form.
Yeah, that's where I was kind of going to ask Dr. Birdsong. So looking at this, is this too broad for you to start?
I, I think some of them are very, very specific, but certainly this gives us a little bit of an idea of what, what the board is thinking. And so what we will likely do is when we meet in January collectively to talk about our priorities, we certainly will take this into consideration as Ms. Smith said, and then bring back to you recommendations.
So can we just do it that way then?
That's what I think.
Where you just take, where you just take the list?
We wanted to give you an opportunity to talk about it. So no one felt like they were left out.
Yep, to death, yes.
Everybody's a part of the discussion.
On that same light, and, and under Goal Two, if you look at A, Behavior Specialist, B, In-School Suspension Monitor, D, what comes back from the Safety Task Force, E, the PBIS Coordinator, G, the school counselors and more time there, H, the SRO in the elementary schools. All of that has to do with physical, making people to support safety in the buildings, whether it's physical safety with the security officers or whether it's mental and emotional kind of safety with the behavior specialists. It, it looks at behavior internal, the behaviors, what the behavior specialists are doing or helping children who have behavior problems and in-school suspension so we can keep them in the schoolhouse. So they're all looking at those kinds of things. Would that be the opportunity for a combination of saying more staff personnel in the building to help with student safety?
And I think that's the takeaway from looking at all of these A through K.
Right, because it's one thing, well, it's A, B, D, E, G, H. There are other things here that, that more focus on the wellness part that might be like its own category. Because I know Ms. Basine's been working on that a while and like maybe trauma-informed care, that kind of stuff. But these have to do with directly with putting those people in the building to directly work with physical, emotional, social safety for our children. Would that be a way to kind of get to it? And then maybe like the old-fashioned outlines, that would be it. And then each of these would be a bullet under it for you, for you and your team to look at and decide where do we have the money and how can we, which kind of staff do we need the most?
And, and again, just by looking at the information that's provided here, that gives us a good idea of where your needs or where your priorities are as a board.
We could kind of create an outline. This is our big priority and these are some of the ways that we would like you to consider doing it.
And, and I find that, that's what this is.
Okay, yeah, okay. So.
Yeah, and to piggy, or to say also, anything that is a phase in where we are in the midst of phasing, like the pay and comp study, you know, I think that is an obvious, you know, priority to, to continue on that path. And to also examine, you know, if there are areas as part of that phase in where we find that in our retention data, that maybe we need to pay particular attention to an area or strata of personnel that maybe we're seeing, you know, a greater number of people leaving, that what do we need to shift our strategy a little bit and looking at that? So, I mean, I think continuing with what we're doing in terms of that phase in, but also looking and seeing if we're, if we're making a difference there.
I'll just, just one more thing. And Dr. Birdsong, I'm almost sure that some of what we have up here, you all are already addressing.
Right.
And my suggestion would be in those cases to just say to us, we're already addressing these and here's where we're addressing them, you know, instead of putting any additional work into that.
We'll use this as a framework.
Yeah, yeah.
I was just going to mention two things that all this, or much of it, falls right within our school board accountability plan. And we're in the, I guess we're still in the, we are in the plan implementation phase. And we are discussing the interim progress monitoring. So year one was nineteen twenty, year two was twenty twenty-one. So I think looking at that phasing and in that, in the plan, there were needs assessments and reports that were coming back to help inform decisions. So I think to the extent that we look at that research and data, that should inform it. The other thing is, I just want to get some clarity on the SROs in elementary schools because that scares me.
That was mine, that's my item.
Yes, I know, that scares me. So there's, there's.
I'm not sure why.
I'm going to explain it to you. So there are school resource officers and then there are school security officers. So my understanding is that school resource officers are police schools. Security officers have a different set of expectations. And they don't carry guns and they are school personnel. So there's a tremendous amount of research. We see things daily with children being, interacting with police officers in schools that lead to pushouts and damage and the whole school-to-prison pipeline centers around that discussion. So are we talking about school resource officers or are we talking about school security officers?
I asked for security officers.
Okay, because it says on here.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't, don't know how that's there.
I can talk to that.
Oh, okay, because I thought I put security officers when I put it, but I might have put the other.
So over a year ago, when we started talking about this topic, and I was of the same opinion as Lauren with having the SSOs, so unarmed security. But after having some conversations with some members of our security team, they thought, our, our task force, and also at some of the conferences and things that I've gone, gone to, there was a, there was a lot of, I, I changed my mind because there was, there, about the SSOs versus SROs. I'm more in favor of the SROs because that, that was what most people I talked to recommended. Most people in law enforcement that were doing this type of work, they are all recommending SROs. And then after listening to the principals talk about how vulnerable they feel when someone comes in, and I'm talking about adults, that they, they have to then police them. But they, again, it's, you know, they're not intimidating. There's nothing in, in their power that they can do if it comes to, if it, as, as the situation escalates. And so, you know, so we'd talked a lot about, it, it would probably be better for the safety and security of everyone to have someone who is trained with a firearm. And I know, I'm going to take this another leap because you brought this up several times, that person does not interfere with discipline. This is just a deter, you know, we want it to be a deterrent, but someone who is prepared, trained and prepared to act if needed.
So I would maybe ask then, because I think I have competing research and data.
I do, too.
So maybe in, in an upcoming work session, we can talk about this and, and review the data and help that inform what we do before we get to the final.
We have a, we have a security task force.
That's what I was saying, we're going to get a report on this from the task force.
I want, I want them to do their job.
So one of my recommendations that I put up there was hear from, results from that task force. So I don't know when that task.
Only met twice.
Right. My, my only point was is as a board, no matter what comes out of the task force or any other advisory committee that we have, for the board to have an understanding of and be on the same page around what this topic is. That's all, separate and beyond whatever the recommendation.
Before we get a recommendation? I'm not sure.
Yeah, just understanding of this issue around SROs and SSOs.
And then I would recommend bringing some people in from the task force so we're not just spinning our wheels with the conversation.
What I'm hearing from the conversation is, is, is that this is an area that a couple of us have put on our list. We have a Safe Schools Task Force. We probably, as the task force is meeting, they, we probably need to schedule them to come in, which, what would happen anyway, you know, to come in and present to us and address, and address some of these issues for the board's clarity. But I'll also say that as we are having these discussions, I do not want the tagline or the conversation piece to be this or this. Because it is not about, it is not about an SRO versus a counselor. It's not about cameras versus this. This is us having this good discussion about how do we see safety in schools? And it has to be driven both by the administration and by the Safe Schools Task Force that is bringing together the perspectives of many. So I take your point, Mr. Jordan, about wanting to see clarity about what it is. And you, you have data and many people have data. It needs to come out through the Safe Schools Task Force, though.
Yes, and I think we appreciate customer, we've got the FBI, we've got Homeland Security. And we also have teachers and principals, you know. We can sit here and talk, but what does it feel like to be sitting in the schoolhouse?
Right, okay. And then Ms. Basine will wrap up with your comment and then we're going to get to our board budget.
I'll, I'll, I'll hold my comment.
Okay. Okay, so then we've had three discussion points on the priorities. I, I do feel good that we've been able to kind of come at least to consensus that we have this document, it's going to give some guidance for Dr. Birdsong. At this point in time, I would call the priorities done. And we'll move on to the next topic then.
Subject to what we made here at the public hearing.
That's right.
Well, I mean, well, throughout the year, it's not just at a public hearing, it's emails, it's calls, it's, it's, it's all of that.
And remembering that May is when you'll get the report back and the budget's done. We're voting on the budget that month, too.
Right, I mean, it's, it's always a work in progress. So on the next item, yes.
I'm sorry, so, so one thing that I think will be helpful is, do you have like an outline of what the task force is, is doing currently?
I'll tell you what, what we can do is we can have that conversation offline with Ms. Martin because she is the task force liaison and that way she can get you that information. Okay, okay. So now on to the board budget. Here we go. This is a tiny sliver of the budget. I want to make sure that everybody has the appropriate documents in front of them. I want to thank Dr. Birdsong and her staff for working with Mr. Clanton and I and Ms. Tanner. As you all know, Ms. Tanner is serving in, in the acting role. Traditionally, the clerk has put forth a budget together with the chair and the vice chair. And I really appreciate the work that's been done to make things nice and clear for us. So what you have before you, actually, Dr. Birdsong, can Ms. Tao walk us through this?
Sure, sure. Mrs. Tao, do you mind coming to the, to the table? And so before she gets started, one thing that I wanted to share with you, what we didn't want to do was to be too prescriptive with you because we know that this is your, your budget. And so she is prepared to provide some recommendations to you as you look at trends over the last three years. If you're wanting additional funding in one area and maybe you underspent for years in a certain area, maybe you can think about reducing that line and, and including that amount in another line. So she's prepared to provide some of those recommendations. So if you want to just give them a general overview of what they have before them and then they can discuss what they would like their budget to look like for next school year.
What you have there, thank you. Good afternoon, Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Clanton, member of the school board, and Dr. Birdsong. Okay, what you have there in front of you, last time you asked for three years of trend data, so I gave you the budget for seventeen, including the actuals, eighteen budget as well as the actuals, nineteen budget and the actuals, and this year's budget, and the year-to-date actuals as of December ninth, two thousand nineteen. So that's, that's, that's it.
I have a question. VRS group insurance, so is this for the clerk?
Yes.
Okay.
So what I will propose is that if you notice, our budget for this year compared to last year is up. And it is up, I don't know if Ms. Tao, if you would like to share with us why the budget is up slightly from last year compared to.
Ten thousand of it is the clerk's salary.
Yeah, the ten thousand is the clerk of the board's salary is budgeted, you know, for the clerk of the board.
Yeah, it's pretty significant.
And that person, it depends on their level of experience and what the board agrees to pay them.
Right.
To compensate them.
But what I also wanted to, what wanted to point out is that this year, because board members can take advantage of health insurance that had to be put into the budget as well. And that, that's where you see it here.
That's correct. What's, what's not budgeted here is the enrollment for health insurance for board members, which is approximately about between now till June thirty, it's about twenty-six thousand, so.
But I thought we paid for our own at this time.
No.
No?
We pay for the employer's share of the enrollment of the health insurance premium.
So you, for, so for board members, the district pays the same employee's share as they would any other employee?
Yes, the employer's share, yes.
Just a question of clarification. So when you all describing the budget is up, you're looking at the grand total of four-twenty-six last year and four-thirty-five this year. And then, but then when you're describing, I thought you were talking about some spending of this year versus.
This year, this is this year.
The, the year that we're in now.
Right.
Right, and we're planning for next year.
Right.
But when, when we, I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding when we're talking about spending versus the, the budget. So the budget, the, the grand total that we have in the budget from last year to the current year is the, the delta that we see at the bottom.
That's correct.
Correct. And so then as part of the discussion, what tends to happen is we start looking at the spend-down rate or the spending rate and then try to make decisions based upon next year's budget, based upon spending rates in the first quarter of this year. I just want to make sure that we're looking at it from a budget perspective and not getting confused by how much we spent on meals, how much we spent on such and such to date.
I, I would think that you're looking at trends, like what you've done over, you know, the past three years and what your needs are at the board.
Because we could just keep the budget the same, I mean, we could, at least a grand total.
Level funding, you could decide to do that.
Unless for some reason we thought that there was some significant area that we wanted to increase or decrease.
You could. You always, you know, suggest that we start with our, our needs and then build the budget around that.
Well, I'm with you. I'm just trying to make sure as a, that my colleagues are following.
It sounds like you're saying we look at the trends and if they look good, we kind of stay with it. But I think we also need to look at the budget and are we spending too much in this place?
Yeah.
Because we have some places that I felt that I brought up last year that I thought were too high.
Ms. Tao, could you also show where in this budget you have the allocation for the scholarship item?
She was going to make recommendations where you could pull that from.
Okay, okay, okay.
For the ten thousand dollars for this year, I probably recommend to take it out of the clerk of the board salaries because we haven't filled that position to now. And we budgeted seventy-one thousand, six ninety-five.
Good idea.
So why wouldn't we take it out of the travel, meals, and lodging?
You could.
Where I see almost thirty-three thousand, six hundred ninety dollars. I mean, we're going up increasingly in the budget this year. And when you look at the three-year trends, we've spent, except for in two thousand and seventeen, which was about twenty thousand, six hundred, we haven't spent over fifteen thousand dollars in each one of those areas. So I could almost say relatively, we could probably save about twenty-five thousand dollars on average out there and save a considerable amount and take the ten thousand from there.
That's another option.
I do think that that, if I may. I do think that that, if I may, I do think that that category is, always tends to be misleading, because, um, over time, some members, uh, never, s- some comp it, some don't, some travel, some don't. Uh, I don't, I'm not necessarily suggesting about the clerk of the board, I think that there's some areas around, um, uh, you know, we can assess the, um, the contract we have with lobbying, there's some other things as well we can, we could look at.
But could I say that it isn't just how much we want to travel and go places, um, or how much even we feel like we need to, it's how much can we afford? This is what the schoolhouse does. They have a certain amount of money, they need a lot more for PD, that's where the PD really, really needs to be done, but they can't say, well, we wanna do all these places and all this kind of traveling, so give us that much money. Instead, they, we say to them, this is what you're getting, and you're just gonna have to figure out how to make do with it. So I think we need to apply that same standard all the way up to the board, to central office. There's a lot of travel going on there, um, and it's not happening in the schoolhouse, and the people that need to train the most are the people standing in front of children.
And, and just to clarify one point, their, their budget, as far as I am aware, is, is based on the number of children that they have. That's what their budget is based upon.
Well, we could do that, too, maybe, and use the same formula.
Ms. Basine, uh, did you have your hand up?
Well, uh, well, I, no, I was, I saw Dr. Burtsong was.
Ms. Smith?
I would like to ultimately have a discussion about our boy clerk position.
Yeah, me too.
We have not had that yet, and it would be interesting to know just what your recommendation is in terms of.
I agree.
Fully filling that position, and then we could definitely make an informed decision in terms of where we may want to take the money from, um, because currently that is associated with a temporary, uh, solution to something.
Right.
But we're almost halfway through the year, right? Um, but we have not had that discussion.
And we haven't had that discussion, and so if you're asking me right now what my recommendation-
No, not right now, not right now, but I'm saying to have that discussion.
And we're prepared to have that discussion, and you're ready to have it as a board.
So, um, but I just wanna make sure that we're clear. The, um, and Mr. Cloud, I thought that when we passed the resolution for the student scholarships, we did air mark a certain category in the budget for where it was to be spent. So I think we need to, A, double-check and make sure that that wasn't already allocated, because I think we did.
Yeah, we did.
Okay?
I think it came out of travel.
And then, and then, um, and if that's the case, then the answer is already there. Um, if that is not the case, then we do need to come back to you with a recommendation. And as far as, you know, whether it comes from the salary of the clerk, since we have our acting clerk now, um, a- at this point in time, it's, it, to me, it doesn't really m- matter, just as long as we fund those scholarships. Um, but what I really need everybody to do then is, since you have this information before you, and since we are, um, getting close to, um, transitioning to the next portion of our meeting, um, I think that there are some non-negotiables on our bu- on our budget that we have to say, you know, these are items that we have to have, like, for example, our contract, um, with VSBA for policy services, our, um, uh, da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da, uh, our NSBAQ, our contract services, you know, those things. So I'd like for everybody to please, over the break, review this budget, and then I want you to come back with either, if you would like to keep the budget level from last year at four-twenty-five, eight-ninety, then we're gonna have to make cuts somewhere. If you're comfortable with staying at what the proposed budget is of, um, four-thirty-four, six-forty, then.
Yeah, that's the same.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So the four-thirty-four, if we wanna stay with that.
There you go.
But, but hold on, if we stay with that, we also have to increase it because of the health insurance cost. So we're.
The health insurance is gonna be an, an additional forty thousand next year.
Forty thousand, so we're looking at a forty thousand dollar increase in addition to the four-thirty-four.
That's correct, plus the ten thousand for scholarship.
So, Dr. Burtsong.
Yeah.
We can't look at this in isolation. So if board members' health insurance increases, that means something on the operating side could very well decrease.
Right, or you could decrease something in our budget.
Or we decrease something in ours. But, but what I'm saying is, is it's not just, um, the adding of forty, it, it takes a lot of consideration as well, I'm getting at.
So we need you to know that, you know, with the, the, the scholarship matter.
Mm-hmm, right.
You have to consider that and the increase in healthcare costs.
That's fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
Right, so those are the things that you need to look at. Do you, do you decide that looking at the trend data, like last year you had over two hundred thousand dollars left, the year before that was fifty-nine, the year before that ninety-one thousand, is there somewhere you can?
Aireys.
Yeah, it does, it does. But again, thinking about what your needs are in the trends, would you consider, uh, you know.
Right.
Taking, you know, deducting a, a certain amount from another area, so that you may not have to go into the, you know, the operations budget of the.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, yeah, outside of the school board's budget.
And our professional development, um, I'm a big person on PD, but when you look at this and you just kind of average it out with the travel, meals and lodging, transportation, and the registration piece there, we're talking about almost fourteen thousand dollars per member.
And we talked about that last year.
And when you look at the actuals, and I know what Ms. Jordan said, every year, you know, it kind of fluctuates based on when folks are going, but I don't see us at any important time spending that much money. And I think that that's an area that we can trim down on. I know that there's been some discussion about maybe identifying one conference that we all go to, and then we designate others to be able to go to the other one. But, um, I think that that's an area, and, and I agree with you, Ms. Smith, in the respect that we can't look at it in isolation, but I think that we can look at a big chunk within our own budget here and move some numbers around without affecting anything in the district and operations.
Or, or you could give each of us a cap, like everybody else has, you know, five thousand dollars a member, or eight, or whatever, but, because some people do go to less, and some, some conferences are more expensive than the others because of the travel and their location and the amount they charge for registration. And people have different interests. You know, it's kind of hard to say, well, everyone has to do this one and that's it for you, because other people say, well, gee, I've gone to this one for years and I find it really good and I'd like to have some choice. So that was the only problem I would have with choosing one.
I mean, you can still go to others, but I understand we wanted one that always went to the team.
Plus, we could do what, it happens in the schoolhouse, those that get to go come back and they have to share.
And so, we, we never get to that point, though.
Right.
So we need to.
On the other hand, though, it just makes, I'd rather see it per, per member.
So can we also get information regarding the average salary for a boy, boy clerk, um, of a district our size?
I think we have that.
I think the SBA provides that type of data.
We could pull that, we can at least.
Yeah, that's a really good idea. And I would say, just kind of, Mr. Billups, I hate to put you on the spot, but I would think an average salary would be around eighty-five, ninety thousand dollars for a clerk?
No, 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 no.
No, no, historically, it's higher than, than most.
It's, um, when we say clerk, there's a lot of different interpretation of what a clerk is. In other divisions, a clerk, some clerks have a PhD and they have gone through the ranks. In other divisions, a clerk is, is, functions as a, as a part-time secretary. So, there was a study, Ms. Smith, and I think Mr. Jordan is probably fast on his computer to get it to you, but there was a analysis done through the VSBA of the clerk's position, which I'm sure, if, Mr. Jordan, if you don't mind just sharing that with everybody, I'm sure I could.
Well, I was just telling Dr. Burtsong, we had researched it before, so I'll pull it up.
He reminded me that we did.
So, I, the term clerk is a very general term, but for what our needs are, we, we can certainly have that discussion and look at it, so.
Well, it's a good starting point.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, um.
So can I just get a, a general philosophy piece then, 'cause we have conversations around, uh, asking for what we need, and then at some point, we're gonna get an update on what the projections are in terms of revenue, based upon the funding formula, based upon the state. So, I would ask whether it's, uh, whether it's the school board's budget or the overall budget, that we are still clear on what is it that we say that we need in order to accomplish the outcomes that we say we want to achieve, and make sure we have factored that in. And so if we're still gonna go for it with this idea of, uh, identifying what our needs are and then trying to structure our budget around that, you know, we'll, we'll end up getting back to cuts and adjustments and all that a little later on in the process. I think we need to be clear on what it is that we're needing, so even when we start having the conversation around PD or, or these other things from the board perspective, uh, I think we are, have heard that we need to be in a position where, uh, uh, our strength as a board is enhanced, whatever that looks like, if that's a need, what does that look like, whether it's five thousand dollars a person or whether it's something different? So I don't wanna lose sight of that conversation around, for the entire budget process, not just our little sliver.
Right.
Are we still trying to do some examination around what we think we need in order to accomplish the goals that we've established, based upon, uh, the board's accountability plan and the bigger pitch that we know that Dr. Burtsong sees?
Right, and I would say that as each of us are in our positions, it is absolutely imperative that we ask for what we need.
So then we have to.
And we have to do that. However, we, we know that how, how fast the budget will come to us and how fast we will have to make a decision, so it is important for us to be thinking, do we want, where, if, where we are going to trim, if we need to trim, where would we find those spots? Because we know, we have to figure out fifty thousand dollars somewhere, and I do suggest, I strongly suggest that we look for it within our own budget versus going into the other portion of the budget, um, that we make that, that we, we have those conversations about where we're gonna pull it from. And I thank, um, the finance department for bringing us the, the data, so that we have the data to help us in, inform, um, our decisions. Ms. Smith, Ms. Campson, and then we're going to tie this up.
One more thing to consider in preparing this, where we can get more concrete information, uh, as mentioned, the clerk position. The second, uh, place is professional development and training. Earlier this year, we said that all of us would, are required to attend at a minimum, certain amount of training. So that's the starting point for the training piece of it, is making sure the minimum that we said we wanted to have is met and how much that costs, and then take it from there.
Excellent. Yeah, that's a simple formula.
Could I end all this on one, one note?
One note?
I know we don't wanna get in the weeds or say things, don't, they don't want us to say things, but I'm gonna say a general thing that I don't think is in the weeds, and it's that we need to raise the salaries of our teachers. We're losing them, they're underpaid, they're frustrated, and it needs to be, it needs to be not, not lost in something else. It needs to be done, and it needs to not be wrapped up as just the pay compensation study, and we're gonna do that, and that's gonna count as a raise. So I'd just like to say that I'd like us to keep a focus on the fact that our teachers are underpaid and underappreciated.
Yes. And, um, thank you, thank you for that, Ms. Campson. Um, we have a whole timeline of, of times when we are gonna discuss all of that. Today, the focus was board's budget priorities and our, and our own budget. So, to be clear, our next steps for this, I need everyone to take these documents home, I need you to answer the question, do you wanna keep the funding the same, um, this year going into next year, and if we are gonna keep the funding the same, then where would be your preference to pull those funds from? And, 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 and again, Mr. Jordan, I know that you said, ask for what we need, but we need to have those items, um, enter consideration for us if we're gonna need to come back and trim, okay? Is that good? All right. All right. Um, anything else, Dr. Burtsong?
No.
Okay. Um, can I have a motion to enter into closed session?
I'm chair, I move that we enter into closed session.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Read the, um, resolution.
Oh. Ms. Tanner, can you read the resolution, please?
Yes. I believe that members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section two point two dash three seven one one of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for a discussion for consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of the Norfolk Public Schools pursuant to subsection one of the above cited code section. The subjects of this portion of the session are discussion of today's regular personnel agenda, proposed discipliner, disciplinary action against specific employees, and a proposed amendment to the acting superintendent's contract, B, discussion or consideration of disciplinary, and any other matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in the scholastic record pursuant to the subsection two of the above cited section. The subject of this section of the session is the discussion of today's regular student support services agenda and allegations of misconduct regarding specific students. C, consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members concerning actual or probable, probable litigation or specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection seven and eight of the above cited section code. The subjects of this section of the motion are consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members concerning the personnel and student support matters identified above and a notice of intention to sue.
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Thank you.